All right, good afternoon. It is Tuesday, March 9th, 5:08 PM. I apologize for the late start. We're trying to get some technical issues here. But I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every meeting. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. I do, before we do a roll call, well, Ms. Smith, why don't you go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before we approve the agenda, I do just a couple of tech things to take care of. Please make sure you are all muted unless you are speaking. So we're just trying to control some of the sound. Some of us are in person in the boardroom. We're trying to get folks back. We are having a few technical issues, so I apologize ahead of time if we have some issues, but we'll work through them as we move forward. So I do want to thank all of our staff who were planning to be in the boardroom with us, but due to technical issues, we're kind of spread out through the building. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. And again, I do just want to say welcome to everybody, both staff, my board colleagues, and any of our community members who are watching and joining us virtually tonight. We're glad to have you, so thank you for being here with us tonight. So first on our agenda, I will pass it along to Dr. Miguel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lopez. So the first thing that we have on the agenda today is an example of what this district is all about. It's a celebration of excellence, of the hard work, the resilience, and the dedication of a group of students who not only had to learn how to attend school in the middle of a pandemic and managed to get impressive results at a time when nothing was easy. This is a celebration of the support parents and teachers provided to these students in the midst of a pandemic, believed in them, and continued to cheer them on because they knew that they could do what they had set out to accomplish. So what we have here today is early graduation, and we are so excited about it. We are celebrating 42 students who despite all of the challenges we all faced this year, managed to rise above it all and graduate early. So I would like to invite Dr. Pitch, the IIO, the Instructional Improvement Officer for high school, to introduce this group that represents excellence in our district. Dr. Pitch?
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for the privilege of acknowledging our 2021 winter graduates. It is very exciting to see these students crossing this milestone and continuing on to pursue their next series of life goals. And speaking directly to those graduates being celebrated this evening, we are so proud of you and your accomplishments. It is our pleasure to acknowledge you in this way tonight with the promise that we will be anxiously looking forward to seeing as many of you that can make it for the official ceremonial walk on the stage this May. So without further ado, may we present the Winter Graduating Class Video Celebration.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pitch. That was amazing, very nice video, and an example of how proud we are of these kids. I cannot imagine the work they had to do to graduate early. I mean, that's such an accomplishment, very proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, that felt really great.
And like Dr. Pitch said, we look forward to seeing any of the students who are able to join us for the May graduation so they can join their graduating class and walk across the stage with them. Thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, thank you, Dr. Pitch, and congratulations to all of our students who are early graduates and to your families. On behalf of the Board of Education, we are so proud of you and excited for your future. And I can't tell you how proud, like Dr. Miguel and Dr. Pitch both said, with this challenging year, you've risen above and beyond and persevered and are moving in excellence towards your future. So we are so proud of you. I'll just share a personal moment. Several of my board colleagues have had the opportunity to do this before me, but when I had the chance to sign the diplomas for those early graduates, I posted on social media. It was, I've signed many things in my life before, but those were the most important documents I've ever had to sign. And I know my board colleagues who have had that opportunity understand what I'm talking about. So congratulations to all of you, our students and your families. We're so proud of you.
And I was thinking earlier today, when we were previewing the video and getting this ready, this is exactly why we are here, right? This is exactly why we are in this profession and why we do what we do. So you make us so proud, great moment, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll continue on with our agenda. Next, we have our Community Comments Policy, or Community Comments. And again, just a reminder to folks, for anyone that would like to submit Community Comment, you can do so by contacting our board clerk, Ms. Smith, via email or phone call. And everything must be submitted the Monday before the board meeting by 12 o'clock noon. So everyone has an opportunity to do so. And I believe we have one comment, Ms. Smith?
Yes, yes, we do. Dear USD 500 Board Members, we are reaching out as student advocates. The graduating class of 2021 has had their normal turn completely upside down. On March 17th, 2020, their world as they knew it disappeared in an announcement from the state of Kansas. Most of these students have not stepped foot into the walls of their high school, for many which was home away from home since the closure of schools last March. These students are living in a pandemic, and many have had to take on additional responsibilities outside of focusing on their schoolwork. Our students have become caretakers for younger siblings and sick family members, educators for their siblings, and acquire full-time jobs or increase employment hours to assist with financial implications of the pandemic, and are grieving the loss of loved ones due to COVID and other illnesses. They are not only struggling with commitments outside of school, but their mental health is also impacted as a result of all the topics listed above. These students want to graduate. They want to have a brighter future. They are working extremely hard. When data was requested from our counseling teams, it was shared that over 200 students would benefit from this change. Our hopes were that it would illuminate the need for this change to occur. We are currently working with these seniors to complete the hardship paperwork. However, this is yet another time-consuming task on top of what they are currently trying to balance. The class of 2020 benefited from a change in graduation requirements. Is it possible to consider this for our current seniors who have been immersed in this pandemic for almost 12 months? Lastly, thank you for your time and commitment to USD 500. Sincerely, the High School Counseling Team.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, so we will move on with our agenda, and Dr. Miguel?
Thank you so much. And my updates today are going to be in pictures, so I'm going to share a couple of pictures here just to show once again the dedication of our teachers, which is unparalleled tonight. As you probably know, last Wednesday, we had a district white tornado drill. That same day, I received a couple of pictures from Principal Cooper at Emmy Pearson showing us how the teachers were taking advantage of every minute of the day, teaching students remotely while practicing the drill. So here you can see on the first picture Ms. Megan Brown, fourth grade teacher, and Megan Lickte, a little bit behind her first grade teacher, both with their laptops on their hands, teaching their students about what to do at home in the event of a tornado. So they took this as a teachable moment instead of just doing the tornado drill. What a great opportunity to teach their kids what to do. And on the right, you can see some of the students that we have in person actually doing the tornado drill, social distancing, and with masks on. So another great example of how our kids know what to do and how to follow directions. And if you can see, on the right, on the floor, there is a tablet there, so they are still watching to see what's happening. Excellent example. My next one is another celebration. This is, let me share my screen real quickly. Wrestling good news, some very good news out of the district. We want to say congratulations to Sabner Jaden Bond, who took third place in the 132-pound weight class at the KESHA Division One Girls Wrestling State Tournament. She looks extremely happy, and we are very, very proud of her. Congratulations. The next one, again, more celebrations, this time it's staff. This month, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools joins many other districts as we celebrate Music in Our Schools Month. And at this time, we are happy to also celebrate two of our teachers for their very hard work. The KU Music Education and Music Therapy Department has selected Pam Garrett and Corey Simmons as the 2021 Teachers of the Year recipients. Corey has worked for the district for the past 15 years and works with our students at J.C. Harmon, Francis Willard, Grant, and Frank Rushton. And Pam has been with us for 13 years and works with students at Rosedale, TA Edison, and John Fisk. We want to say congratulations to both of you, and our students are very lucky to have you as their music teacher. Excellent. The very last announcement is about our Enough is Enough Virtual Community Forum. We want to thank everyone who's really supporting and working so hard to make this work. Family, staff, community members, board members, everyone who attended the last meeting. That was wonderful, there was great conversation. Everybody left feeling that we had accomplished something. So we are now very happy to announce the third forum that will take place on March 21st, that is a Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:30. So if you haven't had a chance to join us in one of these, please do. They are really very interesting, very informative, and there is great information shared. This time, this will be an opportunity to hear from our students in their own words and to also work with people from the community and parents on a mission statement for this program. It will be our own personal way to keep us all accountable and dedicated to our students' future. So you can find the link to register. You see there, it says registration is now open. So to register, go to enough.kckps.org. I hope you can all join us, and that's all for me, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for sharing. Congratulations to our students and to our faculty. Again, thank you for, it's great to see pictures of our students and our staff, and it's just uplifting to see all that. So thank you for sharing, Dr. Miguel. Just a few things on my end. Again, just on behalf of the board, I don't think we can say it enough, but you know, from the Board of Education, we just want to say thank you to all of our staff from leadership all the way through to teachers, paras, custodial, staff, bus drivers, food service, and everyone else in between for your continued amazing work to help us to get through this challenging year as we are coming up on a year that we've been virtual. I just want to acknowledge all of you for the hard work that you do. So we, the board, is so proud of your work and your dedication, and we just wanted to say thank you again. And I know, you know, we say it, but we can never say it enough. I also want to just say, on behalf of the Board of Education, a big shout out and thank you to all of our students and your families for sticking through this and persevering under less than ideal circumstances. As the Board of Education as a school district, we're committed to you and your education. We'll keep doing our best for you. So I just, again, wanted to say thank you and how proud of you we are as a board for all the work that you do. And as we continue to prepare for in-person learning, we'll do all that we can to support you. A shout out to our social workers, who are so important and critical to the lives of our students. Your role is as important now as ever. As we've celebrated you all month long, I just want to, again, from the Board of Education, say thank you because you are doing some great work, changing lives every single day. This month, we continue to lift up and celebrate Women's History Month, and I just wanted to recognize that and the accomplishments of everything that women have given to our society and to our history. I have the privilege to serve alongside six amazing leaders on the board, and I'm so grateful every single day for your leadership. And we have some great leaders in our district as well. So just wanted to lift that up as we continue to celebrate Women's History Month this month. Thank you for all that you give. I know Ms. Levers is going to give an update on the libraries, but I do want to give a shout out to our library and staff for the events that you put out, put together this past month. I was able to join the virtual event, Black Men in White Coats, in which Dr. Jaeger helped to facilitate that conversation as well. It was a great conversation, great discussion around the importance of education, the importance of representation in our communities. And so I'm just proud of the work that you all do, and thank you for that opportunity that you presented for our community. Lastly, I do want to remind our community that there are two bills in the Kansas Legislature right now, SB 61 and HB 2119. Both are, in essence, voucher bills, which would reroute public dollars from public education for students to attend private schools. We know that this isn't good for public education or for our students, and oftentimes, some of these private schools may not be able to provide all of the support services that our students need, like special education or English language support. So I would just encourage you to contact representatives and ask them to continue to protect our public education as they consider some of this legislation. And so that is all I have. Again, thank you, Dr. Miguel, and we will continue on. Actually, Ms. Levers giving an update first?
Dr. Miguel is on mute.
Oh, Dr. Miguel, you were on mute.
I'm so glad that no one heard me because I made a mistake. And now I'm meeting you in public, that's okay. That's what we do. Ms. Levers, you are next on our agenda with your library report.
Good, okay. Good evening, Mr. Lopez, Board, Dr. Miguel, thank you. I heard two echoes, that's why I couldn't understand if it was me or not. Thank you for allowing me to present my report. On the desk, I thought all the board members will be here. I brought a sample of one of our adult kits. Thank you, Dr. Miguel, to share with the board, just to show you what we do every month. This month is Women's History Month, and so we have a take-home puzzle craft at the main library. And this month, we're celebrating women who have made contributions to our history, society, and culture. We celebrate Women's History Month with this fun puzzle. Each puzzle comes in a box to store the pieces and some facts about the woman you have. So it's 16 pieces, and it's a mini-box that you can create and have yourself. Don't worry, Dr. Jaeger, Dr. Nguyen, and Ms. Brownlee Page, I will hold on to yours until I see you. But each month, we have something like this that we send with adults. We do have kids kits as well every month, but we decided we will do it with the adults too. And now, I just want to share with you the rest of my... Start the broadcast, sorry, it's a little bit different tonight. Is it showing? Yeah, okay. So our statistics for February and January and February, you can see all the statistics in January were much higher than the February statistics. We signed up 225 new E-cards in January and 158 in February. Our services, can you also see that in January, we had more people participate than in February, whether it's data sessions, or data searches, or reading and entertainment? Our curbside pickup, we had, by branches, you could see, but the total pickups at the libraries were 12,874 items, and we had 6,574 items placed on hold for our patrons. As Mr. Lopez referred to our Isabel Wilkinson event, we have quite a few patron comments, and I'm not going to read all to you. You can read it as you go through. We have many and many more after I've completed this report privately that people emailed me. I'll just read a few. We had a professor, she was actually working with Leadership 2000 for many years, and she teaches at Park University. She says, "What a fabulous presentation tonight. Isabel Wilkinson was amazing. Both of her books are so well-written and so important for us to understand. And the most amazing part of the evening was you. You went big bringing Isabel Wilkinson and having 3,000 people attending. Wow, just wow. KCK on the national stage, yes, creating community, yes. Tonight's talk was an assignment for my students in their MPA Social Policy class. I can't wait to hear what they have to say about the evening. I'm thrilled and in tears for the messages that were sent and the way you were able to send them." Also, another one, thank you so much for hosting this talk. My husband and I participated, my husband participated with me, and we agreed that this was one of our best webinars yet. An important topic, a wonderful author. That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you for hosting. Great to see participants from all over the country and other countries. She has such an important message to share and address for the future of our country. And then we also had the Black Men in White Coats, and I really want to thank Dr. Jaeger for helping me lead that question and answers with Dr. Dale. The documentary was powerful, extraordinary, and enlightening. Thank you for all your work, some of the people were saying. We had a past mayor also write in and says, "Congratulations, great job, well done." We had a past superintendent, "You and your team continue to bring class programs to our community. Impressive that you had an audience from around the world." And a president of our Library Foundation and of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board President, she says, "I was ecstatic, it was fabulous." There was a lady, a retired teacher, Dr. Pamela Reddick. She's from Huntsville, Alabama. She grew up in Kansas City, Kansas. She heard about the talk, and she decided also to sign in, and she was just in awe. She's just so thankful that we are doing this. And thank you also, Ms. Drew, for attending. We really do appreciate your support. So now, if we go to, sorry, these are comments that you can do at your time. I want to, we will transition to our reopening plan if you do not have any questions with the previous things. We have modeled good safety measures over the last year with our mitigating strategies in place, and we think we can safely open with continuing these strategies to adhere to CDC guidelines with your approval. I don't know if you want me to go through it, but the public hours will stay from 9 to 7, same hours we are having right now, but we will open the buildings, and we will have a time limit and also 50% capacity. And each branch will have a 30-minute use. So you have to come in and just pick up your books or place a hold or do whatever you do. You have a half an hour so that we can rotate people in and out of the buildings. We'll still quarantine materials for 48 hours, and popular holds will have a shorter time limit for that. And popular holds will have a shorter time limit for that. We'll have a welcome station to instruct visitors on rules at entry. We'll have a temperature check. Obviously masks are required. We'll still practice social distancing. That's why we won't have people socializing in the, in the classroom, in the library. So we will have a little bit, we'll be a little bit strange and especially with one of our schools near West Wyandotte. Kids love to come to the library to socialize and we won't be able to allow them to do that. So we will still practice social distancing. We will have hand sanitizers available. We'll count to ensure we stay within capacity limits. And we will ask the adults to remain with their kids. We won't have kids, you know, run around in the library. So we'll have full service with the exception of in-person programs. We won't have any meeting rooms, in-person outreach. We will continue curbside because there's a lot of people who still feel comfortable doing that and not comfortable coming into the library. Computer labs, we will have limited number of people for socializing distancing. And then of course, our bathrooms vending machines are open for public. We have removed seating so that the seats are not too close with one another. And we will have regular disinfecting of the buildings and extra attention on computer stations. And of course, we will not allow loitering. Students love to loiter outside of West Wyandotte because they are moved from the schools. So they go, but then we have the problem. So if they don't come into the libraries, we would like for our ELEOs to assist us in making sure that the students don't, because that's what they do. They come and play outside. And we don't, we don't want to encourage that. Money handling, of course, our staff will use gloves to receive money and deal with payments. And we also have the green light from the Health Department. So just want to make sure that you are wearing that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions from board members or Ms. Levers? Ms. Paige, you're muted. If you're saying something there.
No, I was just saying, do we need to vote on this to make it official?
I'm looking over at Greg.
Yeah, can, can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, so if, if you're going to depart from the policy and reopen the library under whatever format you're going to open it, the board would have to vote to do that.
Thank you, Greg. So there is a plan and a recommendation from Ms. Levers.
I move to approve.
Second.
I seconded.
We can't hear you. We, we still can't hear you, Randy.
Randy, would you mute?
Still, it's muffled. I don't know about anybody else.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's better. I'm sorry. I just couldn't hear.
No, that's okay. It's, hey, it's technology, right? So it was moved by Ms. Humphries, seconded by Ms. Drew. Any further questions or discussion? Not Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The motion passes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Levers. So we will continue with our agenda. Mr. Guerra and his team were unable to be with us tonight. Just to give an update on superintendent search, the process continues on. And we will continue to keep you updated and informed as things move forward. So I will now pass it back to Dr. Miguel.
Dr. Miguel, you're on mute.
Oh, you were, you were muted, Dr. Miguel.
So. Okay, now the next item on the agenda is Ms. Crystal Watson, and we ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accepts an update report on the Kansas City Kansas School Foundation for Excellence as submitted by Ms. Crystal Watson. Ms. Watson, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Dr. Miguel. Thank you so much. Good evening to the board. So glad to see you. It's a happy Tuesday.
You are muted.
I have, can you hear me? Okay, I have a quick little, short little thing to share with you, announcement for an upcoming event that I want to share with you. All right, so are y'all ready? Because I'm ready. The I Believe campaign has officially kicked off effective March 1st. It will run through the end of this month. We are asking all of our board, all of staff, all our teachers, everyone within Kansas City Kansas Public Schools to please donate. These funds will go directly towards our grants. So we are offering Teaching for Learning Grants and Community Enrichment Grants in the fall of this year. So we're bringing it back. Once upon a time, this was offered through the foundation years ago. I would say probably about eight years ago. So we're really excited to be able to bring this back. So we're hoping and asking that all of our staff, please give. I cannot tell you how important it is when I can go out to the community and ask for donations. And one of the things that always comes back is what is your district doing? Or are any of your own folks giving? And so any donation that you all give, we're not asking for any specific amount. Just go to our website at kcksfoundation.org. You'll see webpage for you to make a donation online, or you can do payroll to do. So we hope that you all will take the time to do that and support the I Believe campaign this year. Yes, yes. Now, the final thing is, are you ready for our event tomorrow? I'm ready. So the KCK Engage is tomorrow. You all should have received an invitation. I hope you come by Colby Bruce tomorrow at 11 o'clock. We are launching our pilot program, which is our educational virtual reality. So our schools, New Chelsia, Colby Bruce, and Wyandotte High School have already received all their headsets. And we are officially launching this tomorrow. So I hope you all, board members, can join us. We're diligently working to get this done. And we will pilot this through the end of this year and then we'll start again because we're going to do a full-year pilot to make sure we get good data and outcomes. So we'll see the progress that students can make pre and post using the headsets. So if there aren't any questions, thank you for your time, and that is the foundation update.
Thank you so much.
Next month, I'll bring you information about the golf tournament coming June 2nd.
Thank you so much. So I guess when we go to the event tomorrow, we're all going to be wearing those to try it.
Well, you'll be able, we'll have some demonstrations of them. And we'll have plenty of hand sanitizer, no wipes and all that good stuff. We'll also have a big trailer there that we've partnered with the Future Leaders Outreach Network. We're excited about that. So I don't want to give away too much. You gotta show up.
Thank you so much, Crystal. Very exciting move. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you so much. We're moving along. The next item is the recommendation that the Kansas City Board of Education adjusts the district's graduation requirements and allow the requirements of the Kansas State Department of Education as a minimum for graduating seniors for the 2019, 2020 school year. As submitted by, I think it's 2020, 2021, right? That's a typo there. As submitted by Dr. Troy Pitch, Instructional Improvement Officer. So just to be clear, we are asking for a change in the graduation requirements for graduating seniors for the 2020, 2021 school year. And Dr. Pitch is going to share some information with us.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Miguel, and our stakeholders watching remotely. Thank you for the opportunity to present a proposal that holds a direct influence over the positive outcomes for this year's senior high school class. Included in Dr. Miguel's weekly report was a brief on this policy proposal. However, we wanted to present the main tenets in order to be fully transparent before asking for board action. As you are aware, we have experienced a year of public education like no other in recorded history. The intent of this proposal is to counter what we believe to be direct impacts of the COVID pandemic on our students. And in this specific case, those that have landed on the shoulders of our senior class. The challenges endured by this year's graduating class are evident in the empirical data we have reviewed, the volume of hardship applications submitted to the central office, and by simply listening to the difficult stories being lived out by this wave of our future leaders. Over the past 12 months, they have shared the weight of both academic and increased personal responsibility by taking on work to support family income. Many of our seniors frequently balance studying coursework with caring for younger siblings and family members. All of them continue their learning under far less than ideal conditions while a global pandemic raged around them. Presented here is our current 25 credit formula we use in KCKPS to graduate our seniors. Next to it is the proposed credit formula we are asking to be used this year as this year's requirement for graduation, which mirrors the formula endorsed by KSDE. It is worth noting that this adjustment matches Kansas Qualified Admissions requirements for post-secondary and also meets NCAA Division One eligibility guidelines. As you can see, the shift is in our two-credit district CTE requirements, the additional half unit of English Language Arts and Electives, and the additional unit of math we require from our students in order to graduate. This returns us to the proposal at hand. This exact language is tentative and only serves as guidance for the board in the event it wishes to adopt a different language for similar purpose. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this proposal. At this time, I would like to open it up for questions if it pleases the board.
Thank you, Dr. Pitch. I'd open up. Any questions from board members?
Hi, I do have a question, Randy. This is Dr. Jaeger. Hi, Dr. Piss, how are you doing?
Doing well. Thank you, Dr. Jaeger.
Good. So we saw a couple of comments from the counseling team saying you have a number of hardships that are coming through and it would just make things easier if this was passed. So would, would you, would it be easier on them to get a decision today? Or would, would, would there be a barrier for waiting? Or because this is, seems like the same one we approved last year. And this was something that I asked about before because I kind of saw it coming down the pike with us not returning. So you can answer those questions for me.
Yes, ma'am. We believe this is the right time. With the flood of applications coming in and spring break approaching, we feel like if we waited too long, it would be too late. And these, these applications would have to be completed. They are an extra layer of challenge for our students and for the office staff that has to process these applications. And keep in mind that we are seeing as many as 10 times the applications that we have seen in previous years for hardship.
Well, based upon that, I would like to make a motion that we address the graduation requirements for the 2021 school year for those who, those seniors who are graduating.
I seconded. Motion by Dr. Jaeger, seconded by Ms. Drew. Any further discussion or questions from board members?
I guess I need clarity on, when we say address, like, I mean, I just, what does that mean? That we have a, and if everyone else knows, I apologize, but what do we, what exactly are we approving?
Dr. Pitch, do you want to go back to the other slide where we have the language of what we were seeking approval for?
Yes, ma'am.
There it is. This is what we are requesting, Ms. Clark.
The graduation credits that we have is above the state standard. And so what I am proposing that we approve is to adjust the graduation standards to the state standards, which is only 21 credits. Right now, we require above 21 credits for Kansas City Kansas Public School students because of differences. So this would be an approval to us to decrease those to the base standard of Kansas requirements of only 21 credits.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I saw the presentation, but I wanted to make sure that everything was matching for, for me. And again, it could have been completely my brain.
Yes, ma'am.
Define the hardship request.
So the hardship request has certain criterion for students to apply for and an exception that allows them to graduate with the 21 credits. And if I could, I would ask Lisa Garcia to speak specifically to those criterion.
Thank you, Dr. Pitch. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Those hardship as, as indicated by Dr. Pitch and as you heard from the counselors could be for students that know that they're at risk of not graduating in their cohort this year for a variety of reasons, specifically this year around the students that have had to take on childcare to support the family during the pandemic, employment. And so these are students that are ready to move forward, graduate with their cohort this year, and have applied for hardship application. And again, we're seeing a little over 200 of those. A typical year pre-COVID would be less than 25.
Okay, so it's just the, not just, because it's important, circumstances, not, do they still meet the credit requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
They meet the credit formula required by the state of Kansas, Dr. Nguyen. Not just the 21 credits, but the specific credits, and I've got that on the screen for you, in that particular formula.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So the, the motion is to, is that which has been recommended by Dr. Pitch, which is on the screen now, to adjust for this school year, the credit requirement from 25 to 21 as recommended also by KSDE to stay in compliance. So there's a motion. There has been a second. Any further discussion or questions? If not, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pitch and Ms. Garcia Stewart for, for that.
Thank you so much, everyone. The next item is a recommendation that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approved the agreement for provision of alternative transportation solutions with ALC School. As submitted by Wayne Correll, Director of Purchasing, and Dennis Covington, Chief Operating Officer. And I think Mr. Correll is going to share some information with us.
Yeah, I'll start it all. Good evening, board. Dr. Miguel. The next item on the agenda is an informational item, or you can vote on it if you want to. Is a proposed contract for new transportation service provider for McKinney-Bento students. Name of the provider is ALC Student Transportation Solutions.
Uh, name of the provider is ALC Student Transportation Solutions. ALC will provide transportation services for students that are not currently domiciled uh, within the boundaries of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. And we are, for whom we are required to provide educational services under the McKinney-Bento Act. Uh, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and the District of Domicile will share the cost at fifty percent each. At ALC, we provide wheelchair and ambulatory transportation to special needs students within the district as well as assist with other transportation-related needs such as meal delivery, which they have done over the past couple of weeks. The previous provider uh, of the service decided to terminate their agreement with the district effective uh, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Um, do any of you have any questions specific about the program? Uh, if so, Jessica Smith, uh, the McKinney-Bento Coordinator is available to help answer those. Uh, I can answer any questions related to the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Any questions from board members uh, specific to the program, the McKinney-Bento program? Or about the transportation um, that has been shared with you today?
Uh, I have a question and it's not, I've read the information. And my understanding, this is informational only, right?
Because this is If you, if you chose to vote on it, you could, but it's informational just for this evening. You can wait until the next board meeting.
Okay, I, I, I'm having an issue when we're supposed to be presented and then we vote the next time. And that's just
It, it's just, it's just informational this.
Okay, that's what I thought, because I, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? All right, if not, um, thank you, Wayne. Um, board members, if you do have questions pertaining to the program or to what was presented tonight, please let us know and we can get any questions answered for you. Um, otherwise, this will come back around to, in front of the board, um, as recommended for approval at the next board meeting potentially.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item is a recommendation that the Kansas City Board of Education approved an MOA with Fort Hays State University for the parent-to-teacher program partnership. As submitted by Dr. Liz Metal, Alternative Certification Program Advisor. Liz?
Thanks, Dr. Miguel. Thank you, board. I'm grateful for the chance to be here. I'm gonna share my screen and do a very brief presentation. I think it should take less than five minutes. So hopefully I will keep everybody interested. This is a information-only presentation about a potential memorandum of agreement between KCK and Fort Hays State University on behalf of our parent-to-teacher program participants. Currently, I'm sure, as you all know, our para-professionals who apply for and are accepted into the parent-to-teacher program have three universities that they can choose to attend. And just in quick summary, the para-professionals who choose to enter our parent-to-teacher program move from being para-professionals to being teachers while they pursue their master's degree in special education. There are only three universities in the state that are allowed to that have been approved for this particular course of study because it's unlimited apprenticeship license is a very special thing for KSDE, and those are Fort Hays State, Pittsburgh State, and Wichita State. And I've listed there the cost per credit hour for each of those institutions. Fort Hays State is, it hovers right at three hundred per credit hour. Pittsburgh State is three seventy-one per credit hour, and Wichita State is the most expensive at three, about three hundred ninety-one dollars per credit hour. I'm proposing tonight that we sign a memorandum of agreement with Fort Hays State to be the sole partner for our parent-to-teacher program. Um, are, currently, we have um, nine students at Fort Hays State, three students at Pittsburgh State, and nine students at Wichita State. And we've had um, five successful graduates of the parent-to-teacher program, and four of them have come from Fort Hays State. And our data indicates the highest levels of success for our students who are at Fort Hays State in terms of their retention, their praxis pass rate, and their program completion. Um, it's also the least expensive option, and it spreads out our current partnerships. The Fellows Program, which is also part of the Alternative Certification Program, currently partners with Pittsburgh State. So it would allow us to have partnerships with two important universities. It also allows for a balanced distribution of instructor workload, meaning that Fort Hays State is willing to allow our Kansas City, Kansas instructors to teach some of the courses for the program, which really improves the overall success rate. Um, at least that's been the case for the Fellows. The benefits of this proposal, if we, if you all choose to sign this memorandum of agreement is that it will reduce our cost for the parent-to-teacher program. It will allow us to create a cohort, a cohort model for the parent-to-teacher program, similar to what we use for the Fellows Program, which, as you all know, is, is very successful. Um, it creates opportunities for us to choose instructors for our people, um, which builds internal capacity for the special education program. It also streamlines administrative processes because we're currently negotiating our tuition payment process with three separate universities, and it's quite time-consuming. And it also ensures increased capacity of the parent-to-teachers who are moving into their first year of teaching and allow them to be more prepared. The um, on-the-ground financial change looks like, it's not, it won't look that different for the teachers and it won't, and it won't impact Fort Hays State. It impacts me. Um, because currently what happens is the parent-to-teachers who want to pay for their own tuition, they just pay their tuition. And the parent-to-teachers who want us to pay their tuition, they have to submit requests um, along with their invoices, which are then processed, and that takes um, some time. And then we pay their tuition, and then they agree to work for the district one year for every one thousand dollars in tuition that the district pays. Under this memorandum of agreement, we, the district would just automatically pay all of the teachers' tuition. And then the teachers who don't want us to pay their tuition will pay back the district. And it will um, streamline the process quite a bit. Right now, seventy-three percent of our parent-to-teachers take advantage of our tuition payment program. And that is, I've already said all of this information, but just in case, I wanted to have it here on a slide. I think a hundred percent, these are, these are the two important statistics in terms of our success rate with Fort Hays State. A hundred percent of the parent-to-teachers in Fort Hays's program pass their praxis on the first try. And a hundred percent of the parent-to-teachers in Fort Hays's program have completed or on track to complete their programs. Um, and that is my presentation. What questions do you have that I can answer about this memorandum of agreement?
Thank you, Dr. Metal. So
Oh.
Oh, I, I was just gonna say, um, just for, for clarity again, I know it, it's up um, and the staff are recommending that we enter this MOA. It is for information purposes tonight, um, so we don't have to act on it. But um, this is their recommendation to move forward with um, Fort Hays. So just wanted to make that clarification as well. Dr. Jaeger, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thanks. So to clarify, those who are at different other universities will be able to teach out what they have, still get reimbursed, but the new cohorts, do you have an idea when the new cohorts will start um, for this um, partnership if approved?
If it's approved, we are set to begin in June. Our cohorts start in a summer workshop in June, and we work with them. They'll take classes through Fort Hays State and do a summer workshop with the Special Education Department in our district in June and July, and then they'll start as teachers in August. Did that, did that fully answer your question, Dr. Jaeger?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Uh, this is Wanda.
Well, hi, Elizabeth. Good to see you again. Question, two questions. Well, one, why would we assume the cost if some are willing to pay for their own?
That's a really good question. Um, are, we will, I think that what will happen, because the, the folks who don't want us to pay their tuition will go ahead and reimburse us. I don't think that they will let us pay those costs if they don't want it, because then they owe us years of service. Um, the, Fort Hays has agreed to reduce the tuition even more than it already, because they are already the least expensive university, but they're dropping the tuition even more um, down to two hundred and seventy dollars per credit, or I'm sorry, down to two hundred and forty-nine dollars per credit hour if we streamline their administrative cost by paying all of the bills in one bulk payment. Um, so that's the motivation behind paying it all together. It was something that we went back and forth on when we were doing the contract, but it is such a, a time-intensive administrative issue to, to move the tuition payments back and forth that it was really a sticking point for them. And so
The point, though, Liz, I think she's, uh, Dr. Wen's trying to get at maybe, is it, it's really back to the reason a person would not want us to reimburse them or pay for their education is because they wouldn't want to be under some type of agreement with the district for four years.
They wouldn't have commitment.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so on the one hand, if they don't want the commitment, then why should we pay for it? And then how do they get out of the commitment, just by paying it back? So it's kind of like, we are advancing funds that, I mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense to me.
I know.
Because if they don't want the commitment, then they, we don't advance the funds.
So
Now they want the commitment willingly? No problem. I mean, let's be upfront about it.
Well, here, I, can may I, somebody just, I was trying to screen share and then it got taken away. May I screen share? I'm gonna try again.
I don't have any control over the hosting.
Dr. Wen, are you keeping me from screen sharing? Um, so here's the
Not funny.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the, uh, the, here it is, the, in the bottom part here, it says parent-to-teachers will be invoiced via the Alternative Certification Program Advisors um, office, that's me, and they will owe a signed acceptance of aid letter, or they will owe their tuition. So the idea there is that we do, yeah, it is, we are advancing their tuition. Um, and then if they want us, if they don't want us to pay it, they will pay back the district.
What's the arrangement on when they pay it back, Liz?
Well, we've never done it like this before.
Okay, so we would work that out, so we could come back with a proposal for how that would work so that we don't have to get into all those details right now.
Okay, and for the full disclosure, Elizabeth and I have a solid relationship. So our little bantering back and forth is not malicious. We have a big, bigger bond than you guys think. Thanks.
I'm just suggesting that maybe she would come back with some ideas about how we would actually get the reimbursement.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, Ms. Tishman. Thank you. Yeah, Elizabeth, if you would mind, maybe working with, um, with, with Kelly and, and staff to send something forward to, to the board, um, so we can review that process. That'd be great.
And Mr. Lopez, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. Uh, if, it just seems wild that nobody wants to do the paperwork, but this is what we're supposed to do. Why not have them pay the money in advance? If they don't want to be beholden to the district, pay the money upfront. If you're trying to help them out, I don't know, but I just think it's crazy that we're gonna pay for somebody and then they, they don't have a commitment to us. The whole idea is to try to work out a relationship and hopefully they'll come on board and they'll be teaching and working with us. That just seems absurd.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, because I know we're moving on. It's informational only.
And, and I wonder, um, Liz, if you, do you have any data of maybe what percentage of, um, of um, candidates choose to reimburse us? Is it, do we have a sense of how many that is percentage-wise?
We haven't had any leave yet, so we don't have that data because we haven't, the program is so young. It's only been here for three years. And so the only, we've had three people, we've had three people leave the program, but they didn't take the tuition assistance.
Okay.
So we don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Sorry, Dr. Miguel.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I just was gonna ask if there's any other questions for, for Liz on the program. I think um, part of the purpose from conversations is that this helps streamline the work or a, a, all, all the way around. Um, whereas right now, we've got individuals just kind of looking at paperwork. So this will help us streamline the process, which will make better use of, of our staff's time and, um, from Fort Hays State um, side as well. So this, this will help that um, as well.
And if I may, Mr. Lopez, I just, I just want to say, it's really, money's, money is of course important. It's really about our parent-to-teacher's success. And the, the parent-to-teachers who go through the Fort Hays State program have been very successful. And I want to, I want to build that going forward. So the money is of course crucial, but their, their well-being is, is really the driving factor here and their success. So I apologize. I'm not trying to get in the last word. I'm just
No, no, thank you.
Be successful, but should it be at our expense and they're not coming back to us? I know you said you don't have any cases, but that just seems like a lot. And everybody's gonna get paid. They gonna get their money. Fort Hays and for the people who stay with us, we get ours. But I have a hard time paying for somebody that we know they're not coming back. And, and, and my question is, can you tell us how much time it takes on the paperwork? Because I mean, is this a two-month thing to process or three months?
Well, actually, Ms. Page, I, I think maybe I might have misrepresented something. If the, if they, if we pay for a class, they are required to serve one year. Right now, the agreement is one year for every one thousand dollars we spend, which is actually pretty stringent. Um, and if they leave without that service completed, then they do owe us the money.
Okay, I got that part, but my issue is, I'm gonna pay and then you decide, okay, thank you, and now I'm gonna pay you back? I know you said you don't have any data with any, but that's my issue. Why you can go through that? Nobody wants to go through paperwork and do all that. If they want to pay, let them pay for themselves. If they don't want
A lot of programs work, are, are work, work in that manner, Ms. Page, where um, they streamline that process. So this isn't unique to this program or to our district. Um, our programs have, a lot of programs do that. So um, so thank, thank, thank you for the questions. Uh, we're gonna move forward. This is informational. If there are further questions, please submit them and we will get those answered for you. So um, thank you, Liz, for the information and Ms. Tishman for the information.
Thank you so much. And any further questions that you have, um, please send them my way and, and we'll get the answers. And, and make sure that you have all of the answers next time we come back with this information for approval. I do want to apologize that we have this confusion of accepting versus approving. Some of the memos say approve when it should say accept, so we're gonna make sure that we monitor that a little bit more carefully so that we are all crystal clear on whether it's accepting or um, approved. So apologize about that. The next item is as an informational item only. So we are ac- ac- asking the board to accept as an informational item an update on school reentry as submitted by Mr. Anderson.
Well, good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Page, Dr. Miguel and board. It's great to see you all again, and I hope you're doing well this evening. Um, tonight, I, along with a few of my fellow colleagues, are gonna provide you with a brief update on reentry. And there, I would say that this is just an informational item, but there is possible board action. That's if you determine that you want to do it, and hopefully you saw the presentation um, that we sent to you uh, Friday. Um, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to it. But um, right now, it's just informational unless the board would like to make um, that approval. So I'm gonna move us forward. Oops, excuse me. Okay, so at our last board meeting on February twenty-third, the board had approved the return of students to full in-person four days a week, beginning April fifth, with the option for families to continue with remote if they so chose. Um, since that meeting, I just wanted to let you all know that we have been continuing our connectivity hubs and they've been up and running successfully for our elementary and middle school students who are struggling with connectivity. And then our seniors needing more support. And then we've also brought in students to administer those required assessments, which are the KELPA and the ACT assessments that we have to provide to our students. We also wanted to let you know between now or between the last boarding meeting and now, we also provided our families with an opportunity to make final adjustments for their learning mode decisions um, after you all had approved of the return of students to full in-person. Families were given until the close of business on March third to make any of those final adjustments. So next, I'm going to So next I'm going to have Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart share with the board an update with the most up-to-date numbers, um, that we have received, and that is of, uh, Monday, uh, March 8th. So Ms. Garcia Stewart.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board. I, I first and foremost want to take this opportunity also to thank Carleen Kramer, Penny Ashley and Michelle Gould, who work feverishly behind the scenes, um, with our student data information system. So our, um, numbers here show you the number of students that are in-person and remote, early childhood through high school. Our total responses for in-person learning will be 15,395. Students that are going to continue remote learning are 6,620, which is, um, our total, then is our current enrollment as of yesterday. 22,015 students. You do see there are 17, um, um, numbers that are without responses, 17 students. And that is because we are continuing to enroll students. So as of yesterday, we had 17 students enroll, so we haven't, um, we're, we weren't able to include those, um, with the choices they had selected yet. Um, because a lot of things are happening right now as our schools are preparing for in-person and remote learning. So I'll pause there before we move to the next slide. If you have questions about the total number of students that will return in person, are remote, um, and the number of students that we still have no responses because they are just finishing up the enrollment process. Okay.
I, I, I have a question. I don't know if now is the time for the question. Now, we had a lot who left in March and we had new students coming in. How will they get their ID badges? There were a lot of teachers who were concerned about that. And I don't know, I didn't send that question in advance. You don't have to answer it now, but can you find out? How are we going to do that to make sure everyone has the proper ID? All their information is updated. I'm not asking for an answer now, but sometime the next time we meet, if possible.
But I, I do want to say, Ms. Page, um, enrolling new students at any time of the year is not new. So we all, anytime that we enroll a new student, a new badge is issued and that's done at the school. So we can get more information.
Because we started with remote. Remember, a lot of these kids, they never entered. Your ninth graders, your transfer students. So I'm just saying, and that was a question that had been asked to me and I didn't get it to you. I'm not asking for it now. I know what we do, but how do we do it if we went to remote stage? Did they come up and pick up a badge sometime? That was a question that was asked. I'm not asking for the answer now, but that was a concern. How did the transfer, the new kids, kids didn't get in? Remember, we kept it rolling. So how does that work? So I'm not asking for an answer now, but by the time, the next time we meet, can I get an answer? Please.
And Board, you will notice that the numbers are a little different than on the presentation we shared with you. I will share this with Leslie so you get those most up-to-date numbers, but the information is the same on the. Ms. Garcia.
Sure, thank you. Um, so as we move forward, we wanted to share with you information we'll be sharing with our families because we are preparing for the, um, 15,395 students that are going to be returning in person and the 600, 6,620 students that will remain in remote learning. So I indicated a group, a team that I work with and we meet multiple times a day. So there's a lot of things that needs to happen with our infinite campus student, um, database system. So schools are planning, um, as I said, and there are adjustments that will need to be made to student schedules and rosters. Therefore, as we, adaptations are being made, we'll temporarily pause parents that may have new requests, um, just until March 22nd. That probably seems like a long time from now, but next week we have spring break and our schools are closed. So we just need to adjust those adaptations for this week, the next three days. Then parents that need to make adjustments based on remote or in-person will be able to call their child's school and make those adjustments. Um, we have communicated that to our schools. We'll make sure that communication is on our district website. So we wanted to make sure that we are communicating to the board. If adjustments need to happen, they will happen throughout the year. And, um, if they make a change, um, after March 22nd, it will just likely take three um, to four days to make those adjustments for a new student schedule, just as if they were, um, new to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart. Uh, next we're going to have Mr. Terrance Sanders, uh, explain, uh, what our student learning focus will be when students return. So, Mr. Sanders.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Miguel. Student learning along with safety will remain our top priority for our students as they return for in-person and learning. Our commitment is to ensure a learning environment where our students are engaged in their learning, the instruction is aligned to the standard, there is critical thinking required, and a variety of high-yield instructional strategies are used by our teachers. To do this, we will focus on quality tier-one instruction. Tier quality, quality tier-one instruction is instruction designed for all students to meet the needs of all learners. We do recognize the need to provide our students as necessary with extra support as we continue to provide instruction on grade level standards in support of learning for the remainder of this year, but also in preparation for next year. As a district, our teaching and learning department will continue to focus on the model of instruction. The model of instruction includes standards-based planning, standards-based instruction, conditions for learning. Standards basis planning consists of using the plant, using the standards that are provided our GPC to provide instruction to our students. The instruction will consist of high-impact strategies that will design, that will be designed to ensure mastery of content for all of our scholars. The conditions necessary for learning to take place will be built upon relationships in the classroom. We will make sure that our classroom environments are positive and respectful, that they are focused on relationships, they are student-centered with adherence to management and procedures. We cannot accomplish any of this without student and staff wellbeing at the heart of all of our decisions. As I said, relationships will be key for our students and our staff. We, as a district, are committed to ensuring care and respect for our students in order to create a positive, energetic, safe and orderly climate and culture for all of our students as they return to in-person learning. We know that over the last 12 months, our students have not benefited from being in person. And for this, we are prepared through our social and emotional learning to address the needs of our students as well as our teachers. So while student learning will remain a top priority, it will be done in conjunction with safety for all of the individuals who will be in our schools. And that's all I have for our student learning focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Appreciate that. Um, next, um, as all of you are probably aware, um, we are still awaiting a decision, um, by the, uh, Kansas Legislature on a proposed statute that would bring all students back on March 26th, which is Senate Bill 235. And I know, Dr. Win, you're probably very familiar with this currently. Um, based on all of that information, if the bill is passed, we will need to adjust our schedule to a five days a week. And as a reminder, families who opted for, um, staying remote would still have that option. Along with, um, the in-person five days a week, our proposal would be to continue to use the remainder of Wednesdays until the end of the school year as early release days, similar to, um, what we've done in past years. Uh, I believe on February 9th, we passed, um, the approval for the waived PD for 20 hours, um, after March 26th. So what we would do, instead of making those three-hour days, we'd go back to two hours a day, um, versus those three. So tonight, although we do not know what the Kansas Legislature will do, if they will pass that or not, we still wanted to bring this as a possible board action to you. And so our proposal would be if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, the remainder of the school year will be five days a week with Wednesdays dedicated as early release, which would be a two-hour early release. So I'm going to stop here and see if there's any questions and then determine if this is something you want to take action on tonight, if it's even something we need to take action on. So I'll let the board, um, have a discussion.
Yes, I'm happy. This is Yolanda. If we go ahead and take action on it, I just want to clarify then, we're not holding you up. If this passes, you're able to go ahead and move forward.
We'll, we'll still plan for March 26th return. It would just mean that on March 23rd, because we've got a, another board meeting before the 26th, where we could pass, um, if we wanted to make those Wednesdays, we could do it on the 23rd as well. It would just, if it happens, then we can explain to parents or families that the remainder of the Wednesdays would be early release if you did it tonight. Just a, a little time, um, get more timely.
I am, I, I'm okay with whatever people decide, but I'm okay with voting on it tonight.
Yeah, I would like to make.
Please add a question.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, um, recommendation for approval to give parents time. I know as a parent myself, it's important to get advanced notice as possible. And because we weren't quite sure what the bill was going to require or the statutes or what have you, and even going back on a Friday is a concern to me. But if the bill passes, I think it's important for us to, um, ensure. So my recog, my proposal is, uh, I, I would like to make a motion, uh, that if the Kansas Legislature passes SB 235, the remainder of the school year will be five days a week with Wednesdays dedicated as early release, um, for that two-hour release.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Thank you, Dr. Yager. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second. I know there's questions because those questions were trying to come in before the motion came out, but I'll go ahead and second it and then so people can ask their questions to be comfortable.
Thank you, Yolanda. I definitely need to, that Ms. Clark. Now I will open it up. There's a motion in a second. I'll. The question, I know Miss Humphrey was trying to get in there.
Uh, Wanda Brown.
I'm gonna let Ms. Humphrey have the floor for just a minute, Ms. Page. She was trying to get in there.
Um, I have a question for Lisa Garcia Stewart. Back on her slide about, um, ex- extending a parent choice deadline beginning after spring break. Could you be a little bit more, um, clear on that? I was kind of confused.
So, thank you. So I, I'm not extending it. We're just going to pause on any current changes the next three days, next week is spring break, and then as parents need to make adjustments, they can begin calling their child's school on March 22nd.
I thought they had to make those choices by March 3rd.
They did, um, but as, um, we have moved forward, there are changes that, um, especially to return in-person. And so we want to make sure we're able to meet those needs. So we're just pausing for these three days. We can adjust and allowing our parents to call on March 22nd if they have changes.
So the deadline's been extended then?
Yes. Go ahead, Dr. Miguel.
Our thinking was if a Senate Bill 235 passes, it clearly states that we need to offer an in-person option. So we did not think we would, um, follow that bill but not open it for people who now that they know it's five days a week, may change their mind. So we felt, uh, as a result of that bill pa- passing, if it does, that we would have to offer that in-person option if parents wanted to change. And so we paused so that principals can move forward with their schedules as they've been planning them and also because we have, um, spring break next week. So when we come back, by then we'll probably already know. And if a, if a parent chooses to change as a result of the bill having passed, we will give them that option to make sure that we fully comply with the law.
So, so we are kind of extending the, the, the deadline. So parents can still call after spring break to change to in-person versus remote. So all parents can still change, correct? Yes. Right, but I just want to make sure that all, all parents know they can still change. Okay, that's, I was just a little bit confused there.
Okay.
That, that's all. Thank you.
And I do also want to clarify, make sure that, uh, everyone understands in case parents are listening who chose remote. If Bill 235 passes, we are proposing, we have followed the guidance that, um, students come in five days a week with early release on Wednesday. But those parents who chose remote still have that option.
All right, Ms. Page, I know you had a question. Go, go ahead. You're muted there, Ms. Page.
Okay. Can you hear me? Oh, well, I thought the legislature was going to vote tomorrow. Can someone help and give some clarity? Because, Dr. Win, will they vote tomorrow or they're just presenting information tomorrow?
Tomorrow is a, you said, go ahead, Ms., uh, Dr.
No, you go ahead, Dr. Miguel.
I was just gonna say, uh, tomorrow there is, uh, I, it's going to be discussed at the House K-12 Budget Committee. But that's not where the, the, the bill becomes approved. Um, Dr. Win, if you can add more clarification, I would appreciate that.
Well, that's, that's why I hope sta- staff administration and board members will understand why I, I can't vote for this at this point. We have a hearing that House Committee has a hearing on Senate Bill 235. That's one process. At another day, we don't have a meetings scheduled for Thursday. You work the bill. When you work the bill, you can put in amendments. When it comes to the floor on another following day, amendments can come to it as well. So I'm not comfortable voting because Senate Bill 235 in the, in the wording as it is now is not guaranteed be, to be the wording that it passes out. Then if there are any changes made, it goes to conference, where, you know, you trade in, you trade out. Now, we're, we're on the floor, probably, I'd have to check my schedule again. Uh, Greg, you don't have anything, do you? Our schedule?
I don't have the schedule in front of me. I'm, I'm not sure when it goes on the floor.
Um, I think we're on, I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up in the next, I should have had it. I'm sorry, I apologize. But I understand the, the lead time that parents need. The 26th is probably the day that we will not change. But I don't know how much really solid, not-changing information we can give a parent as far as that, you know, do we have the option of a two-hour early release? I don't know, though, what the language of the bill will say.
I think we could, I can make a friendly amendment to mine, uh, recommendation to not include the extra line at the bottom. And that friendly amendment would say if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, uh, we will follow the direction of their guidance for the rest of the school year.
With respect, you probably want to continue, you want to say the remainder of the school year will be five days a week. And stop there.
Right.
Now, now, again, the little caveat is in-person. That's the, the draw.
Right.
And that's the hassle that, Ms., Dr. Miguel, you understand is the, is the painful part.
So, um.
So, um, if I may suggest, maybe we need to mention the other remainder of the school. For the remainder of the school year, we will offer an in-person option that will be five days a week. Because I want to make clear, um, unless it's changed, parents may still have the option to do remote for the remainder of this year. It doesn't.
But you know, I don't want to be deceitful. I think the clearest thing you could say, which then will lead, leave us latitude, is that the remainder of the school year will be five days a week, period.
Okay.
That, I think, would satisfy the, the hostility. And then, then depending on the language of the final bill, then the school district works its, its uniqueness.
Okay.
So the friendly amendment would be to say if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, the remainder of the school year will be five days a week, period.
Ms. Clark, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, second.
Dr. Win.
Well, was Greg, was, did Greg, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was, I was agreeing with you. Um, I was having trouble getting my mic unmuted, so I apologize. Um, I think, I think it's, I think it's all just to say it's five days a week, but I think it's also in-person. I, I think those are going to be the two options, aren't they?
Yeah. Are you sure you wanted to say the two options are the two mandates?
The two mandates is what I meant to say.
Yeah. And you realize there's no hammer at this point in the bill. But that doesn't mean it can't come at a later time.
Thank you for that information, then.
Okay. So, um, Greg, can you, can you state the wording again, just so Ms. Smith has, um, the correct language and, and everyone's clear on what the motion is?
I, I think that the motion would be is if the, uh, Senate Bill 235 passes, uh, passes the legislature, that, um, the district would follow the directive of the statute and return, or not, and offer a in-person, five-day-per-week school option.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You, you wouldn't-
That's not clean enough. That's not too clean, Greg.
It wasn't too clean. I was trying to think it through. If you got, if you got a better way to word it, go ahead.
No, you get them big bucks.
This is what I heard that was said. The motion would be that if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, the remainder of the school year will be five days a week with two mandates.
It's, it's an option. It's an option. The district, the district would have to offer a in-person, five-day-per-week option for the remainder of the school year. That's what I understand the current.
Can we just say that we'll follow the bill?
You can say that. At this point, it's probably the safest thing. But you don't know if you want to.
Does the bill allow for still remote?
Yes.
It's going to that.
Okay.
As, as an option it does, but you, but you have to provide the in-person option.
Okay.
If it passes.
So if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, the remainder of the school year will be five days a week with an in-person option, option. Does that, does that make it clear and?
It is clear to parents that they also, if I voted for remote, I have that as well. Is that clear? Is that in there? Will I see it? Cause if they don't see it, there's gonna be a problem.
The intent of this bill, I believe, is to make sure that we offer an in-person option. And the word option gives, I think, the understanding that you do have the option of staying remote, but as a district, we do not have the option of not offering an in-person option. That's the intent of this bill, that we will offer five days a week in person, so parents can choose that if they so choose, or they can stay remote.
Dr. Nguyen, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Didn't you say that when they work the bill, they can add amendments?
Correct. You can add amendments in the committee, and you can add amendments on the floor. You usually cannot add anything in conference. You can agree to remove.
So we want to make sure that we don't say we want to follow the whole bill, correct?
That's what I would, I would warn against that.
That's, okay. So we want to make sure that we-
And I, and I guess, I don't want to be deceitful, but you want to be, it, at this point, I don't know if we can be as clear to parents as necessary, because it's still so uncertain. But Dr. Miguel was very kind. The intent is not to allow an, a remote option. The intent is to bring everybody back in person, and if you remain remote, remember they would want to, they would have wanted to punish and reduce the funding down now. That would kill half the districts. But, but again, Ms. Garcia Stewart and every principal and Dr. Miguel, you know, you, it's almost you have to hold parents' hands and say, we're here for the student. You, you know, you still have that option. But the reality is, the legislature is mad that the COVID federal dollars have come and more federal dollars will come. They're mad that KCK and Wichita have been remote. They're just mad.
So-
And I don't mind publicly saying that, cause I will say it also in Topeka.
Is it the safer option to wait and find out exactly what's in the bill when it's passed? Before we-
You know almost what's there now.
Okay.
You know that. The, the, the peanut of it is in-person by the 26th.
Okay.
Now, now-
So might it be helpful if we said that the motion is, if the, if Senate Bill 235 passes, we will move the, the return to school in person to March 26th? Cause that's what we will do with the five-day, um, in-person.
Yeah, I think that, I think the change is the five-day in-person, which was not the current proposal.
The date.
Date.
So if we put something like, if the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, KCKPS will offer a five-day-a-week in-person option starting March 26th?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Starting the date specified by the bill.
What's that?
They've already pounded to 26th of March, so you know that's-
Yeah.
And, and if you, again, if, the, the nurturing of the relationship with parents is so key now, that, that if, if something changes, you gotta be able to, to talk to a parent and, and not have them bite your head off.
And as a parent, they have been doing a great job of communicating and reminding and sending text message and reminder after reminder about, you know, changing your child. I've heard the teachers say it over and over again, make sure your parents call in. So I think that they've said it many thousands of times. I think, um, the key is, since the date is moving and things may change after spring break, that continued, uh, communication. But, um, you know, majority of parents I talk to are very in tune with what's going on.
So, Mr. Anderson, would you repeat your, what you said, and Dr. Yeager and Ms. Clark, if you are in agreement with that change, um, please say so out loud verbally, um, for the record, and, and then we can continue on.
I'll read it as best I can and slowly so everyone can get it, and we get it in writing, cause I want to make sure you all have it. If the Kansas Legislature passes Senate Bill 235, KCKPS will offer a five-day-a-week in-person option beginning on March 26th.
I'm fine with that friendly amendment.
Second, so.
Okay. So Dr. Yeager and, and Ms. Clark are both, um, okay with that change in language. Uh, Ms. Smith, we can get you that direct language, um, as well, so you can have that if you weren't able to capture all of it. I know it's a lot and changing. Um, thank you. Any, um, final questions, um, before we move forward?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I think we need to encourage, and if it's possible, we could put it on our website, who people need to write to in our legislature. Cause what they've literally done that nobody wants to say, I'll say I'm crazy enough to say it, is taking the power away from the school board. And they've done that to all the districts. And they're deciding what's best for us. What might work in Western Kansas might not work in Northeast Kansas, and that's part of the problem. And these people have decided that a pandemic is not a disaster, and this is what they want for us, not asking us. So we need to write to these people. We need to, they're, they're bold enough to say that our teachers are not teaching, and that's not fair.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I would encourage folks to reach out to your legislature, legislators if you feel so inclined, and, uh, lift your voice and let it be known, um, how you feel. So thank you. Um, there's a motion, a second, lots of great discussion, everybody. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, will you do a roll call, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
And I did send an email to Leslie, um, Randy, Greg, and, uh, Dr. Miguel with the possible language for the motion in case you missed it, so wanted to make sure you knew that. So next, we're going to have-
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. We're gonna have Ms. Jody Mitchell from our Human Resources Department talk, uh, briefly about our staff, um, accommodations.
Well, good evening, everyone. Yes, I'd like to give a quick update on employees requesting work accommodations. Just some current numbers as of today. So we have 130 employees that have requested work accommodation. Um, just to break that down a little bit more, 24 of those 130 are classified employees, and the remaining 106 are certified employees. So of those 130, we have 20 of those employees, um, have currently submitted the proper medical FMLA paperwork and have been approved for accommodation. And 110 of those employees are still needing to return paperwork. And HR has reached out to those 110, uh, employees via email and personalized phone calls just to re- reiterate, sorry, the importance of, um, getting that paperwork submitted. We're also working with principals, uh, and the IIOs as the student count numbers and these, uh, position count numbers were submitted to principals last week. Um, they are now identifying the staffing needs so that we can have, uh, a clear determination on what our final staffing numbers will be and, um, you know, what other things will be needed so that children can learn. So that's the update I have.
Thank you, Jody. And finally, we have-
Can I, can I ask her a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So you're fine.
I, I received a letter from a lady who was given, said that she would get accommodation, and then she said she got a letter saying, it's just strictly FMLA. That's it? Cause she said she had gotten the, the approval for accommodation, then it was taken back. And now they're telling her, I, I'm just, for clarity for me, it's just strictly FMLA, nothing else.
Yes, it's for medical FMLA is the reason that we're able to give accommodation. So if you have childcare needs, for example, those are not, um, accommodatable, if that's even a word, circumstances.
No, hers wasn't childcare. Hers, she had some health issue. She filled out the paperwork. She said it was approved, and then it was taken back.
Okay. You can send, if you want to send me her name or send it to, um, Dr. Miguel.
Okay.
I'd be happy to look into that.
Yeah. I, I would just say, um, that, you know, and, and I totally understand, and, and, and a lot of this has been taken out of our hands, um, you know, with having to bring students back and things changing so often, so frequently, um, that we need, you know, we, we need to make some adjustments to what was originally put out there. So I know, you know, folks did receive potentially some accommodations early on, but I know, um, in conversation with Dr. Dr. Miguel and, and other staff, you know, um, they've had to change what that looks like so that we can staff our classroom. Uh, you know, we're having all these students in, in the building, so that's part of the issue. So I, I, I understand, and I, I want to just, just, I just wanted to say that, that everything's changing so often. A lot of this, especially if SB 235 does get passed, changes everything again. Um, so I, I, I do appreciate that question and, um, but, and also understand that as we, as circumstances change, we also have to adapt and make changes, um, that will impact folks.
Thank you.
So next we'll have, uh, Ms. Elizabeth Morris give a f- update on health services.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on health services and of course, the impact of COVID on the district and our community. Um, as we've, um, talked before, um, we are looking for a total of 44 nurses so that we can be fully staffed and have a nurse present in each one of our school buildings, um, for when the children return on April 5th or March 26th. And we do still have that one school that's remaining to be, um, completely staffed with a full-time substitute. Um, that is a school that currently doesn't have any children attending it. Um, but we do anticipate that we will have this, um, school staffed. Probably, um, by the end of the week, we'll have somebody in place and then be able to, um, orient them the following week after spring break. So we, we do think that we will, um, have a nurse in every single building. Um, of course, daily unscheduled absences do continue to impact, impact our staffing, but thanks to, um, the great work of the agencies that are working with us, they have been contacting us on a daily basis, offering us, um, extra subs to fill out. And so that has really been, um, just kind of a, a great safety net that we've had, um, by having them in place. Um, as an update on the county, numbers are really looking pretty great. As you can see, um, they were only seeing about 13 cases a day. That is, um, you know, kind of unbelievable to see numbers like that. Percent positivity is somewhere around nine to 10% currently, and so again, things are looking, um, really good. And, um, to be very honest, I'm, I'm so thrilled that, you know, with the children returning very soon, this is the state that our county is in. So I think we're in a good place. And then finally, a vaccination update. And we are continuing still to send people to be vaccinated every week. And currently we're at about, um, 2,400. We're just shy of 2,400 staff members who have received the vaccine. Um, and we'll be sending, um, another group tomorrow. Um, and then we'll just keep chipping away at, um, you know, getting people closer to, um, our, our goal. You know, a, a goal, um, for example, with influenza is 70% vaccinated. And the Health Department would love to see us get to 80%, but I think we're still a long way off from that. Um, so currently we're at about 55%, um, but that's, they're pretty proud of where we are. And that is all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more slide.
There's, there's one more.
So we, we did submit our health and safety plan, um, as a draft to the Health Department on Friday, and we're just waiting to hear back from them on their suggestions or requirements. Um, uh, currently there is, um, a little bit of, um, what we're waiting on to hear as far as, um, an update on recommendations for screening. Um, currently they are actually saying they want us to continue, um, with daily staff and visitor health screenings, and that would include, um, a daily questionnaire, um, as far as, um, symptoms, and then any exposures to, and someone who has tested positive. Um, but for students, they are recommending that we no longer do daily temperature screenings. Um, the data is showing that that is not, um, as reliable as a, um, symptom of COVID. Um, some studies have shown that less than 50% of children have any kind of a temperature elevation. And so, um, because the, you know, the, one of the important things is to keep children from congregating as they're entering the buildings, um, it's, it would be better for us to not set up, um, multiple exposures every morning. In support of us no longer doing temperature screenings of students.
Anything else, Dr. Miguel, that you would like to share regarding, um, Wyandotte County Health or?
Can I ask a question? If they're not gonna screen the kids, what about the adults? Because that's where you tend to have, we've had the biggest problem. Prior to the kids even coming in, the adults were, so do we take their temperature?
Um, we, we are asking staff to monitor their own symptoms daily. And, um, of course, they can check their temperature at home, and if they, for whatever reason, are not able to do that at home, we obviously have that capability for them to self-screen when they arrive at school. And, and we're asking the same thing of families, um, that they monitor their own children and on a daily basis, you know, ask how their child is feeling, um, and if, again, if they've been exposed to anyone who has tested positive, then we would ask that they do not send their child to school. But we are relying on adults to be adults and parents to be parents.
And then my second que- question, you said we had 44 full-time nurses. Now, I'm assuming 36. Out of that eight were supposed to be the eight for subs. And the other 36 are the full-time nurses. I know you're counting the whole 44 with the eight, well, with the seven in for the subs. So I'm just trying to look at the numbers. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All we have for you this evening, um, I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and team, for all of the information. Thank you, Board, for thoughtful dialogue. We appreciate it.
If there are now more questions, um, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is policy review.
Thank you, Dr. McGill. So in front of you, you have, hopefully, Board, you had a chance to review. We have three policies up for a third read. Um, Greg, is there anything you wanna share or say before we get into that?
No, these, these are the same policies that we have had, um, first and second read on. This is the third and final read. So if there's any questions or modifications, happy to make those, but if not, I would recommend you adopt the policy changes.
Mr. Lopez, I just have a question on item C. So are we taking them one by one?
We, we can. If you, or if you have a question on item C, yeah, we could, we can take them one by one, if that's the pleasure of the Board. So I'd entertain a motion to accept for third read, uh, policy GAR.
Can we do both, the top two, if no one has any questions?
That's perfectly fine with me as well, Dr. Jaeger.
I make a motion that we accept policy, um, GAR and JGCC for the third read.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you. So we are, um, so, Dr. Wynn, did you wanna go ahead and ask your question for that third policy?
Sure. Mr. Goheen, where is standard response protocol defined? Or explained?
Yeah, so the standard response protocol is actually, um, every building is required to have a standard response protocol for emergencies. Um, I, I think that, I think the standard is actually set in the statute as well. They're required to have one, and it's updated. Um, that includes their tornado responsibilities. That includes their, um, any kind of emergency at the building. It also includes, uh, sort of the active shooter protocols as well. So it's, it's, it's just, uh, the protocol that each building has for their emergencies that take place in that building.
So it's a generic phrase?
It is a generic phrase for that purpose.
Okay, um-
But each building is supposed to have one.
Well, uh, Henry Horn is sitting there shaking his head. Do I acknowledge, or what do you, what do I do?
Point of clarification, ma'am. Standard Response Protocol is the title with the Board approved for the I Love You Guys Foundation. That includes everything Greg spoke about. So SRP is a Standard Response Protocol is the name that you all approved several years ago before I got here for the item that covers all those elements of emergency operations.
Okay, because I was looking in the policies and to put in those three words, and nothing came up other than that clause that used standard response protocol. So should it not be someplace defined? I mean, if it's before you got here, Mr. Horn, then it's before we got here. So where is that? Where would one know? How would one know that?
That is completely up to the Board if you need to add that language. It is just the item and the template that you all utilize at the school district.
Mr. Goheen?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that essentially, that's the name of the, I call it book, cause it used to be a binder that each school had for what their emergency protocol was.
Okay, so every, I mean, each building principal has a, let's say theoretically, a notebook, and the title on the, on the book says standard response protocol, and it has tornado drill, da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I understand it to be. Now, in this, in this age, it might not be a, it might be electronic. It might not be a binder anymore, but that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to accept the third read proposed, the third read to, for policy EBBD.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie Humphrey, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we will continue with our a- agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie says yes.
Thank you. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Great consent. Agenda passes. Thank you, everybody. Um, next up, we have an executive session. Um, we, yes, Dr. McGill?
I was just gonna say, before we go to executive session, I would like to excuse the staff, cause there is no further action when we come back. So staff, you can go if you so wish.
Have a good night, staff.
Thank you for all you do. Bye, thanks.
All right, as staff are leaving, um, we have one executive session. Greg, about ten minutes or so, you think? Okay. All right, so would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Going in at seven twelve and coming out at seven twenty-two. Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie Humphrey, yes.
Thank you. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye.
It is reported now.
There we go, okay. Motion to come back into open session, please.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes, thank you, Leslie.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we're back in open session. Um, no more items to cover on our agenda. Thank you all so much. Have a great rest of your night. This meeting is adjourned.
This-
Oh.
Forget it.
Thanks. Good night.